Good afternoon. And welcome to a special meeting of the council of the city of Long Beach. On Friday, February 3rd, 2017 at noon, at 1:00 PM, sorry. One more call, Councilmember Mayndell. Councilmember Moore. Vice President Aramo. President Torres is action. And the resident case president of Corporation Council, Robert A. Stecce, will now be suited to the play.
Good afternoon, everyone, welcome. This is a council business meeting. And as such, subject to the order of meeting laws, which is why we do our business right here in front of everyone. And as such, the city manager does not have to be here. So, one question that came up is why we're having it today in the afternoon? And I just wanted to address that. The reason we're doing this appointment today was because we do have a council meeting on Tuesday. And we wanted to offer the opportunity for our selection to be briefed on Monday night prior to our meeting on Tuesday. So with that, Dave, please call the first and only item.
And what is the appointment and designation of a new member of the city council in City Long Beach?
Okay. Because of the election, this Councilman, I need dogging to the judiciary. We did an exhaustive search and we used to invite a few folks. And we narrowed it down, collected people together. I think we came up with a great process. And found someone that was well qualified and someone to work with us and be part of our team. That has a great passion for the city and serving our community. And with that, we're here today to appoint Tommy Diamond to the city council.
Is there any public comment? Is there any public comment? Do you have any questions, make any comments? Is there any public comments?
So, Mr. Hodge, Mr. Hodge, you are out of order, but I will answer that.
Okay.
This, this is not litigated nature. This is council business.
Okay, it, it, on, on, on the charter says that you're supposed to allow the community to be able to speak. Okay, I think the process is not fair to have that 1:00 PM when people are at work. You could have did this on Thursday. You can take me out, you can take me in handcuffs, take me out of handcuffs. This is not right. And what you're doing, I'm here, yes. Every candidate may be great. If you want to turn my mic off, they can hear me without, turn it off.
Mr. Hodge, there are more people here than come to our regularly scheduled council meetings.
Okay, so obviously if phone calls went out that someone was going to get appointed, then what deals were made? Okay?
No deals were made.
No, listen, something was made because obviously there was another candidate that told that he was going to be in. I understand everyone can be great. Tommy Diamond is wonderful, she has wonderful family here, but what you're doing is wrong. If you want, again, like I said, if you want to lock me up, lock me up. Just, just Marvin McMoore, Dan, why is he not on?
Mr. Hodge, please.
Where's the vote? Please, what? I helped get Cindy Dine and the community will help get him out.
Please.
The city charter says, the city, the city charter says people are allowed to speak.
Subject to the rules of the meeting, this is not such a thing.
So we're not allowed to speak? Okay, so.
Please come on Tuesday.
No, I hope that my community will be here on Tuesday. My community will be here on Tuesday because of what little things were said about maybe we need to be put out and given the R and P. Because again, I don't like letting no kid being messed with.
Mr. Hodge, now is not the time, James. Listen, now is not the time.
No, now is the time. The time is always right when, when injustice, okay, is happening. And it is an injustice.
We didn't even vote yet.
Listen, well, what I'm supposed to wait till you run over me to start speaking out? What I'm saying is you're not allowing the community to speak. It would have been wonderful to do this at a public meeting. Tommy Diamond is wonderful, she did a lot of great things. Some other candidates did, did a lot of good.
If council was elected to make tough decisions, and this is one of them.
What does Section 25 citizen participation say? Go ahead, bro.
It said, "Subject to the rules." On a council meeting, you're a terrible president.
Subject to the rules, subject to the rules, you're opening the conflict of the city council meeting. Any citizen personally or through council shall have the right to address the city council or its standing committees on matters of public business at any need.
And you mean to tell me to, you turned my mic off?
I did.
Okay, so anybody can hear me anyway and the community will hear me in November. If this is what you want to do to my community, you turn the mic off when I'm a taxpayer here in this city. I have a right to speak. Did you just hear the charter? The charter is in order. Do you follow the charter?
100%.
Scotty's attorney, Robert's attorney, maybe you don't know, it's in the charter. The community get a chance to speak. I'm not speaking ill of anyone. What I'm saying is the process is wrong, okay? Yes, bro.
Subject to the rules set by the president.
Okay, so the president is saying the community can't speak? I just want to know.
You're next to me, I'll answer to you.
Okay, go ahead.
Subject to the rules set by the president.
And I mean, where the charter doesn't say that, Mr. Stecce.
Under the charter.
Well, it's supposed to say it's sectioned code, no? Where does, I want to know where it says that.
Where, where it says?
Where the charter doesn't say that the president takes the rules to the meeting.
He presides the meeting.
Where does it say that? And where does it say he makes the rules?
Well, there's a section.
What do you authority that you have to do that?
What section? I just want to know, again, I support, okay, what's right. And if that's what it's called, that's right, look it up, you, you mean, you're the city attorney? We've had a lot of dealings with. And if anything come our way, I put the city on notice right now. Brad Brunson has already been notified and you should probably get a letter in the mail. Anything should come our way, okay? So, I mean.
I don't, I don't understand.
You, well, you will understand if anything come our way. I'm being very rich. You don't understand?
I don't understand if anything comes your way.
Well, listen, Anthony, me and you have had discussions, I don't mean, I don't want to get private.
Section 71, sub 3.
Can you read it, please?
Sure.
Can you give us permission to speak as a president?
The council shall elect from its own number by a voter majority of members, a president of the council who shall preside at meetings of council.
Preside at meetings, but it doesn't say that he makes the rules. No, he gets the term of procedure. No, preside, he sits there, he resides over the thing.
He resides.
He don't, he don't say that the community can't speak.
But he can, however, president has been in every other.
That's not what presiding means.
No, presiding means he sits there on people. Look what's happening.
I mean, listen, don't let, while you're a great attorney, don't let people tell you to do something that's not legal. Because you have the news here, it's feeding live. Please don't get caught up into what people, well, you're a good attorney and you have a great future, but we're live here. And we don't want the city to get caught up in any legal actions, you know, that's not like, you know.
Sometimes there are differing legal interpretations in the jury.
Right, so the interpretation is that what?
Interpretation is that the president.
Can you turn my mic back on? I got enough, go ahead.
The president says the rules at meetings.
But it doesn't say that in the, in the charter.
All right, so again, it doesn't say it in the charter.
At no other appointment of a city council member have we ever committed to voting on.
No, it doesn't mean that you permitted it, it doesn't, I'm going along.
You went back to meetings, you went back in time, you went back four, four different appointments. Call the city clerk and I'll be telling you. You can tell me it hasn't been done, then I go on to, but you say it's time.
And no point that we're aware of.
You went back to four meetings, Mr. Fraser told me that. You went back four appointments.
And, and the thing is, just because it's been done, don't mean it's right. It's the law. What is the law? So again, everybody here, you're here to support, you know, whoever been here to support. And we had a lot of great candidates. And the, the young lady that you selected is great. I'm here to support Marvin McMoore. And I'm wondering why, what, what happened in the last couple of days? We have this great young man who's outstanding. And I'm here to support him and I'm understand, trying to understand how do we get to 1:00 PM? What did you say? Because we just figured it was a good time, we wanted to get our act a bit before Tuesday? Well, the caucus meeting is on Wednesday, so how you want to, you want to meet tomorrow? You want to have caucus tomorrow? You want to have caucus Monday? I don't care if you look at me, bro.
I'm not looking at you.
Okay, I've been doing this a long time. I've helped people get in and I've helped people get out. And I'm not, I don't fear any man and I don't fear anything.
Isn't about me and you.
Listen, trust me, me and you had our conversations. Part of it is about me and you. We can discuss this afterwards. But again, I'm here to say what I've said.
What is, honey? Should she be appointed right now, we'll have an opportunity to be briefed for Tuesday's meeting. So I assume that means Friday and Monday.
Okay, well, I'm.
Why not postpone this until a public meeting where people can have public input? So I would implore Mr. Moore, so Mr. Aramo doesn't want to do it.
Also. So I am not making the decision by myself. The majority of the council, the majority of the council, you decide.
I asked you to make a motion to hold a meeting, to postpone this now, table the matter until Tuesday, when people can speak about it.
Why wouldn't you want people to speak about this? Even if she, she is a great candidate, why wouldn't you let people, whether they argue right, wrong? Let people speak. I supported you. I look like an idiot right now.
That's what this is.
Okay? I supported you. She, listen.
You're talking about transparency.
The council will do whatever they do. The council is going to make the decision, but why seem, make it seem like it's something under the table?
It's not under the table, this is an open.
But you're not letting us talk.
But you should have, the council.
This is a council appointment. We were elected, three of us.
Okay, so you said it's a decision.
And a decision of debate.
Every one man.
We have, we've had public interviews.
Every one man.
You have not lobbied all of us for the last two weeks.
I guess, I lobbied, I said all of us.
He had a Facebook. What are you talking about?
I'm on Facebook, you, you got me as a friend, maybe you haven't been on in a while.
I have not been on this, bro.
All right, well, open the back shop, you probably got a lot of messages. All right? The thing is, listen, social media works. It's, it's not, it's not a joke. It's very serious here. I think people have talked ill about someone good. No one can ever say that I said anything bad about any candidate. Whether it's Helen, whether it's Dennis, Jimmy, never said nothing bad about him. But when we tell young Joshuas to grow up and do a great job, and then this young man goes to college. He's the national president, represented all over the country. He works for the mayor. He's doing all these different things. And then we sit and say, shut up, it ain't your turn. I'm being told, listen, her father is a rapist, we got to stay back. I appreciate her father. I appreciate her family, whatever they did. But never call me and tell me to back up. My people have been through too much to try to back me in the corner. I will never be bought, I will never be paid, and you can never shut me up. And you can never shut my community up. It won't happen, it won't happen.
I'm sorry, James, it's not about that.
Okay, do whatever you got to do. I'm ready to go to jail. I'm staying right here, I'm ready to go to jail. We got some officers here, civil disobedience.
I'm with James, arrest me too.
Arrest me if you have to, put me in handcuffs. I'm ready, I think the community should have been put, and it's not fair. If I got to take my watch, take my watch, I'll get it when I get out.
President Aramo, I'd like to, President Aramo, I'd like to make a motion that we move into executive session to discuss this matter further.
It's not a personnel matter. You can't, this can't go into executive session, it's not a personnel matter.
However, we still need, we need.
I understand, with all due respect, this is not a legal reason to go into executive session.
Jewish and black community have been together for many years. And you tried to pit us against one another. We worked together, we went through some struggles.
Not attacking anyone here.
Not attacking anyone in particular.
Just gave you the chance.
But this was all set up and then something popped on the internet. Nobody would know about this meeting but the family.
Just postpone it until Tuesday.
With respect, with due respect, James, everyone knows about it on Facebook.
No, now they do. But it popped up on the city's website and obviously the Herald didn't know about it. It wasn't on the city's Facebook, it wasn't on any other thing. So I, I, with all due respect, it popped up because legally it has to be a notice. And so it was legally done, but nobody knew. So, I'm here. I don't, I'm not resisting. It's not fair. Again, Miss Diamond, you're a wonderful candidate. No ill wishes for you. You've been the best, I've heard great, great things, but I'm fine. Right, but I just don't think they're doing right. Let the community speak, it didn't, it is what it is. After the election, then it is yours.
You have to ask yourself, if you don't understand anything, you're just not. You're going to, you are, as an elected official, prospectively, you're going to allow them to continue doing this and do this.
Not on trial.
No, I'm not putting her on trial.
You are.
No, no, please don't, please don't say that, I'm not.
Don't direct your questions to, don't direct them to a certain person.
All right.
I'm directing the council. You're here to speak to the council, not for us.
You're correct. I'm a member of the city. I know, James, I'm just asking.
But you're going to direct your questions to.
I, I apologize, you're correct. You're correct, you're right.
Direct your questions to.
No, you're right, I apologize. But when they do things like this, you have no choice.
You have anger to them, James.
I have no anger. I have no anger. I have a lot of anger.
It's all right, our Republican administration, the Democratic administration, we do what's right.
It's just me and James screaming, it's just me and James.
Rob, I'm.
They're not going to change, we can, we know the reason.
Of course.
They're not going to. Thank you.
Okay?
But the last thing I want to do is James. It's good to have a pick me wake up. I hope people will come up and follow.
The people unite will never be defeated. People unite will never be defeated. Martin Luther King says, "Life begins at the end and they become silent about things that matter."
Please, please call the item.
And what is, and what is that?
I am here to represent, and if this is civil disobedience, that means that I must get arrested. I was arrested. I am here again.
See what's going on, bro?
In this public civil disobedience demonstration, I don't, I, I am here to speak. I'm here to let the community speak from the bottom to the makeup, from the ocean to the bay. Everyone has a right to speak, whether they're for or against. You are making the candidate look bad.
Mr. Hodge, is that a good meeting? Do I have a right to speak as well?
Yeah, go ahead.
I understand your passion. I understand your frustration. I hope you understand that it's a process that we follow. This is a process that has been followed for, as far as we've researched, multiple appointments. I've sat through appointments. When Councilman McDoggan was appointed, it was the same process that. Everyone's entitled to their opinion, turns out to voice it at the proper time and place. We've received many great residents. We interviewed a lot of outstanding candidates.
Come in.
During the interview process, Tommy Diamond showed, at least in my opinion, she has dedication, she has insights, and she has experience. Which I feel personally, perfectly the goals of this council. It's not a slight against anyone else towards you. But I was elected to use my judgment and cast my vote.
And a person that's necessarily been your campaign manager and helped you win. You know, who's national.
And you also don't promise a judgeship to do it.
Now, Mr. Hodge, I don't want you saying somebody has a great, big lie.
What, what do you mean?
You didn't say no.
Mr. McDoggan was not a campaign manager, and I hadn't been.
I didn't say you need. I said Marvin, basically.
He just, he's a work.
I apologize, this isn't a debate. This is false recoup.
Okay, all right, so if you don't want to hear me, I'll keep talking. All right, like again, you, you guys should know me by now. All right, I'm not no chump that's sitting on the street just talking. All right, so as I said, you can't lie to me about. Keep my mic off. As I said, I feel like what you guys are doing is wrong. You're making the candidate look like she's a part of something, under the table. You're making her look bad, which you should have just did at a council meeting. Okay, yes.
James, can I speak first?
Yes, ma'am.
If you said that you wanted other people in the audience to speak, you're still standing there.
If somebody come up, I'll let them speak.
Is there anyone else? Because I would like to give my remarks and just time to cast my vote.
Are you allowing him to speak?
I'm allowing him to speak.
You got to turn the mic back on.
I can talk.
No, no, the community needs to hear, everybody.
I'll turn around. I'm just back to the house. Please, Mr. Moore. Um, you guys talk about transparency, and that's all you call your Facebook pages. That's all you call your Facebook pages.
This is the only council member that will speak.
You guys talk about transparency, it's all over your Facebook page, it's all over your press releases. But the fact of the matter is, there's no transparency at all. You had interviews, but you specifically chose who you had interviews with. You didn't even give members, four members of the council, including myself and other members of the council, the opportunity to talk. And Mr. Torres, the person who's in charge of this committee, said he wanted experience, so we had people dive right in. You didn't give anybody from the zoning board. Um, and again, Mr. Torres said he wanted people with experience. This is not about celebrating, about me being up there, trust me. I don't want to be up there. I just know that you people are dishonest. Um, when it comes down to this, this decision would be behind closed doors. It was the political self-interest of, of Mr. Mayndell and Mr. Aramo taking precedence over the interest of the residents. Let's be clear. I have nothing wrong, nothing bad to say about Miss Diamond. There are facts that you can keep ranging. Um, by, by appointing Miss Diamond, you're getting, you're letting go of the power of political control for the city. You're giving the power of control to not only the local party leader, but you're giving it to the county leader, Mr. Jay Jacobs. Because I know that you've been promised a judgeship or a nomination, you've been promised the presidency of the city council, you prefer doing this. And that's why Mr. McMoore was not chosen. I do know that you elected officials, uh, I don't even know how you can, you just head down that night, to be honest with you. In fact, let me share a couple of things with you. According to New York State Board of Elections Committee Financial Dislosures, Miss Diamond made multiple political donations to the Democratic Party in 2015 and 2016. That's not wrong, that's her right. But these disclosures were made from an address at 856 Westport Lake in Woodmere. This is an issue. It shows that she declared her address in Woodmere in 2016. And therefore, she's ineligible to be on the city council. Because not only on the city council, you have to be a resident for two years. So here's the question, was Miss, Miss Diamond being dishonest when she filed these disclosure papers, which I have a copy of? That show her address in Woodmere, or is she being dishonest right now? Um, somebody's not telling the truth here, that's, that's the bottom line. Um, I did two background checks also that I gave. When I found her address, it's not in Long Beach, actually. Um, and I also had a note, I filed the foil, and I'm going to get this information. But I know for a fact from sources in the county that Miss Diamond, um, she was registered to vote in Woodmere and she changed her registration in March of 2016. That would make her ineligible to be a city council member. The charter states that she be a resident or a domicile, and a domicile in the state of Long Beach for the previous two years. So why are you writing this down on the road? You're not giving us a chance to thought? It's beyond, this isn't about that, about this Miss Diamond. This is about the law and about the people having their voice. And that's that. So I want to know who's really pulling the strings here and why they're pulling the strings. Because it's time, it's about time that the people of Long Beach get their voice back.
Yeah.
And here's the, here's the papers, if you want them.
Here's a picture of the, that's from the, the assessment.
And when I get the foil, I'll share it with you.
I just want.
I'm waiting for you to respond, like that. Are there any answers?
Turn the mic off.
Yes, 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 turn the mic off. Turn the mic off.
We, we bet on all our candidates. And right now, we're actually, we're, we're Miss Moore's vote.
Um. You don't want the mother of a candidate to speak? Thank you.
It's Miss Moore's, it's Miss Moore's time right now.
I recognize, I recognize you as speaking, and I'd like to just really move forward with the vote. Yes, I speak.
All right, all right. I'm Miss Moore's mother, and I feel that this was already resolved. Um, Mr. Diamond, the board is happy about his hearing to celebrate his nomination. And, um, it was already resolved, and I don't know when wasn't resolved.
This is a council decision, it's, we'll, we'll give a vote. If we get three votes, then it's, then it is resolved at that moment.
So now, you want to vote now?
We're going to vote now, yes.
Okay, well, why?
We're third in the way there.
Why do you hear it is stated that it was already resolved?
I'm sorry?
Why do you hear it is stated that it was already resolved? It was already done.
Because the council made a decision and we, um, asked to hold this meeting.
Okay, so, and this is exactly, so you can do your vote now? Okay, well, I just wanted to be known that my son, Marvin, is overqualified in this position. He was trying to become a president, and I was relieved, but my son is overqualified in this. And he's aware of that.
I think, I think it's pretty clear that it's, everyone up here loves Mark and knows Marvin has personal relationships with Mark.
All right. So, you know, that's what I want to tell you, that he's overqualified, he's going to be okay regardless, and that's it.
Thank you.
All right, so first, um, I just want to ask a couple of comments that I'd like to make with respect to the situation. First, it's important to once again speak to the overall search process. There were several highly qualified candidates that were considered. Um, the discussion, as well as the venue process, was a fair and civil one. Given the fact that we know the history of what we've experienced here on the council, given our different perspectives. Second, I'd like to speak to the political and social realities that are, as it relates to the process. The process, both the public's reaction to the process has revealed that we have a lot of work to do. That there's a real conversation that needs to be had about race and class and gender. That an individual's race, or their class, or their gender, or religion does not make one person more qualified than the other. Furthermore, the process revealed that party politics, the county politics, and personal interests have no place in important positions such as this. But we know the reality that they do. But the search process allows us to look beyond and find what is the best decision to move the city forward in a time of transition. As a black woman, I have, for the most part, been labeled and been ridiculed on this council for naming the enemy. Naming privilege, naming racism, and all the isms that go along with what happens here in our city. But again, I recognize that in this situation, the winds, the winds of change, even though they're delayed, it doesn't mean that they're going to be denied. And so you may say today, well, there's no change here, it's business as usual. But it's not. Because for the first time in a whole year that I've been on this council, this is the first time that we actually have discussions as a council. I've been left out of the process since January 1st, 2015. And this is the first time that I've actually been a part of that process. Having said that, do I support Brother Marvin McMoore? Yes, he is a shining star, and yes, I encouraged him to move his name forward. As a, as a result of the fact that I am a black, a black person who represents all communities. I've been attacked viciously for the past two weeks. I've had phone calls, I've had threats, I've had people question my identity. Uh, however, this is not about me. This is about a fair and equitable process. And so today, in terms of the process, I've named all that we need to do. There was work to do as a city of Long Beach. There was work to do as a council. That this will never happen again in terms of us not coming together and looking beyond the isms and looking beyond the, the party politics at play. We have work to do together. And we cannot do that work unless we move the city forward at this time. And so with that being said, I cast my vote for yes.
Aramo, before you vote, there's two people that want to speak. Want to allow them to speak?
Uh, no, it's my turn.
You're not going to allow them to speak?
It's my turn to speak.
All right, so then I mean, I'm ready to go back into my vote. This will be, all right, so I, as I said. No, 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 no. If you're not going to allow them to speak, I'm going to continue doing what I'm doing. He wants to speak.
I'm sure there's lots of people that would want to.
All right, so I mean, I got to continue doing what I'm doing. They don't want you to speak. It's not me, but I don't want him to keep going, like he's not going to respect.
So we did an, an exhausting process.
So, as I said. Turn my mic off. Again, as I said.
Mr. Hodge, please.
Our life, listen, is a form of.
This is not.
When you're silent, when, 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 when you're silent to your friends, you've got, it's almost a.
Well, you're not silent. I know where you are. I know how you're feeling. I know how you're feeling.
But life begins at the end and then becomes silent about things that really matter. And this really matters to me.
It really matters to me also.
Because half of you Americans have only been able to vote for about 51 years. And it's very important when you try to shut the community out.
We're not shutting the community out.
And shut our community, I shut my community. You are shutting the community up. Because you don't, you didn't allow the community to speak.
I vote yes.
You didn't allow the community to speak. So, as I said, again, I'm ready to get arrested. I'm ready to go to jail. You're making Miss Diamond look bad, who's a very good candidate. And so I stand here and again, I say.
I appreciate how you showed Miss Moore the respect to the chief of state. But you didn't show me any respect and let me speak.
Show respect to the community from the bottom to the top. I didn't support you to get in to just respect people. Whether they're Republican, whether they're black, white, Chinese, you're doing wrong. Okay? You're doing wrong.
Who am I doing?
I'm good. You're doing wrong, you're doing wrong. I'm good. You're doing wrong. So that being said, the vote is over. But I'm, again, you're doing wrong, congratulations. You guys are going to take a picture with her, at least, and you mothered her, yes, take a picture with her. Miss Diamond, they should take a picture with you.
Thank you, brother.
Listen, you just fight all you want. After the vote, the vote is the vote. So we move on. Oh. Sorry. So, but we speak Tuesday. Tuesday, 7 o'clock. The community is speaking. Tuesday, 7 o'clock. 7 o'clock. Tuesday, 7 o'clock. Let the community speak. Let the community speak.
Um, 6:17, if you want, oh yeah, get outside. I'm sorry, James.